All right, I'd like to open the July 14, 2020 regular meeting. So we have Mayor Pro Tem Vandenberg and Councilman Jamie Lyon here, and we have Bob remotely. Andy, I guess, is en route, but he's not here right now, Andy Wortman. And we now have a picture of John Jones up on the screen.
Hi, John.
Hi, John. So I'll need a motion first to allow remote participation.
I make a motion to allow Bob Markleese to participate remotely.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we're good to proceed, and we'll just announce. It looks like Andy's walking in the door now, so we'll just give it a minute and let him get in here before we go any further. That's okay. We'll rate in a minute. We just opened up, so we now have a full council. And I'm sorry, I put this right in the order. Full council's present, and we've made a motion for Councilman Markleese to participate remotely. First up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or subtractions or changes?
Yes. Can we table new business number four, the discussion of partnership? Bob, can you hear me okay? I'm gonna try to talk loud.
Yes, again.
Okay. Discussion of partnership with Jean Stowe's documentary, Inherit the Land. We still don't have an outside funding policy approved yet, so it's kind of a moot point until we have that done. So if we can just table that until, I guess, put it on the work session, but I don't know that we'll have the outside funding policy done then, but let's just move it to the work session.
Okay. At least good for discussion.
Yeah. And then we need to add under Agenda Item Four, Public Comment, we need to add Presentations, Recognition of Service for Barbie Blackwell. That would be number five.
After public comment?
Yep. And then, new business, I guess, new number five would be Discussion and Consideration of Unfinished Minutes.
That's on new business?
Yep.
Which would be the new number five.
Yep. And then, number six, there's an emergency repair that needs to be done in Weddington Chase, so we need a discussion and consideration of emergency repair in Weddington Chase, not to exceed $10,000. And then, number seven, Discussion and Consideration of Coffee with Council.
That's on new business?
New business number seven.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry. And that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Anyone else? Bob, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Jamie? Do you have anything? All right. I'll need a motion to prove the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Public Comments. I have, I see we have two people signed up. One did not want to speak, but I believe wanted me to read her letter, right? Okay, so I'll start with that. Just a reminder, if you're presenting, you have three minutes. You say your name and address. First up, we have Jennifer Heary. She is not here, but she did send, I don't know if you all got the letter, but I'll read it for the record. "I won't be able to make the meeting on the 14th, but wanted to provide some feedback to be considered beginning on page 71 and almost to the end of the packet. There are discussions regarding reducing the speed limit at two of the roundabouts. The discussion all seems to mention reducing speed limits currently set to 35 miles per hour, but the real dangerous road is Marvin School Road at 45 miles per hour limit that extends almost all the way to the elementary school crossing intersections. There is no intersection of this road that is safe to travel at 45 miles per hour, yet vehicles routinely travel much higher. Also, vehicles do not reduce B to 35 at the school or beyond. The entire road from the roundabout to Ray should be 35 miles an hour. Can you please pass along suggestions, those that can help with advocacy for this?" So thank you, Jennifer, for your comments. The next I have, I see Robert Sullivan. Is he here?
He is here.
Oh, okay. I see Robert Sullivan, so just, Robert, just a reminder, your address, where you live, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, here you are. Great. You got time.
Well, thanks for the time. I'm Bob Sullivan. I'm at 1300 Shennecott Lane in Firethorne. I've been a resident 16 years now, so I've been around a while. But just, initially, I just wanted to raise for your thought and consideration. I listened to the last meeting where you did interviews for the vacant council spot. Quite frankly, I got disturbed, having heard the liability waiver that was read by the town council to the potential candidates, which sort of sprung something in my head, which has been there for a while, dating back to the Mary Plute lawsuit where, you know, the captain settled for $50,000 in absorbed amount of money, and then leading up to the Chris Smith lawsuit over the last election. And it's my understanding, I guess, that some people were covered by insurance and some council members were not, and they had to come out of pocket and incur significant legal fees in order to defend themselves in a case which was summarily dismissed, which I believe by the Board of Directors and otherwise. It led me to a concern, you know, there's a couple of, there's multiple ways that we can disenfranchise the citizens. You know, one of them is by direct voter suppression, and the second is by creating an environment where we're just prohibiting people from running for fear of facing fees and facing lawsuits, which, quite frankly, have turned out to be frivolous. And I just wanted the council to consider, especially in circumstances where there's been no wrong proven and the parties have been totally vindicated, to make it sort of a policy on some level to reimburse the aggrieved members of the council, a couple of, one of which I know and one of which I don't, in order to sort of provide some further assurances to the people that live in the Village of Marvin that running for office is a good thing. I mean, I appreciate everything that everyone in the council does for the town, and I have since I've moved down here. I just think it's, this situation started, I think, with the first settlement, continued with the second lawsuit, and I just think we, the council should address it in some way, shape, or form at this point in time, so that it's not a recurring, sort of embarrassment to the town of Marvin. Every time there's an election, people do get out and vote, and then there's a six-months post-election of coverage and lawsuits. So all I really wanted to say was, I would like you guys, when you're delivering, talking about things, to sort of maybe bring the topic up and address it. I know it's a number that nobody wants to spend, but quite frankly, I think it's necessary in order to protect the integrity of the elections and what goes on in the town. That's my, I only need three minutes. That's all I need.
Thank you. Your time just went up anyway, but thank you again, Bob, for being here and for public speaking. Appreciate your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. So we don't have anyone else on the, who hasn't signed up, so moving on. Next up, we have Recognition of Service Barbie Blackwell. I don't know if we want to start by just, you know, anybody want to say anything before? We have Barbie here. I believe it's your last day today here, right? And we have a presentation of a plaque. Would you just go around the room, say a few words if you'd like?
Well, Barbie, thank you for everything you've done. You've helped us a lot. You certainly helped me quite a bit, ERG, and transition over here, so thank you for all you've done.
You're welcome.
Jamie?
Barbie, it's been a pleasure. Every time, from the first day I met you, from the first day I walked in here, you made me feel welcome. You made me feel comfortable. And with everything going on, that was, that meant more than you could ever imagine. And everything you have done for the whole time I've been here, you've just made it simple and easy and just delivering the package, and everything you have, Barbie's touched on. And I can't thank you enough. You will sorely be missed by me, but thank you for everything, and for my personal, on my personal behalf, we'll miss.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, are you there?
Yes. Yeah, I was gonna just reiterate what Councilman Lyon had said to Barbie. So Barbie, you know how I feel, you know, personally, we've spoken. I'm personally going to miss you. You were very supportive to especially, you know, Councilman Lyon and myself, to getting us acclimated, to the routine, and, you know, coming, you know, doing what you do, setting us up for success. So thank you for doing that. I feel far more secure doing what we're doing right now, you know, and, you know, basically managing the citizens of Marvin, mainly because of the security you gave us. So thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
Barbie, I reiterate what Bob and Jamie and Andy have all said. You made, when I was elected, the transition very easy, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of your dedication and hard work that you've given to the village over the number of years you've been here, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And as for myself, we go back probably to the furthest, so we've experienced quite, quite a interesting time together with all the things that have happened, and I couldn't have appreciated you more for being willing to come back and help us out and get us through this in a very challenging time. And you've been a lot of, been there a lot of times for me, helping me through processes and finding out, helping me understand things a little bit better, so, and I couldn't thank you enough for your service, so I appreciate your time that you've spent here, the Village of Marvin, and wish you very, all the successes in life as you pursue your new career path with, I think it's Waxaw, correct? So congratulations on that. And with that, I would like to present to you, the Village of Marvin, like to recognize Barbie Blackwell for her years of services, Villis Kirk, 2017 to 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have to stand, or?
I just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity to serve you. I've enjoyed serving you and mine here with the village, as well as, you know, my 28-year career of public service, so thank you for the opportunity. I wish you well, and so hope to see you around sometime.
They'll definitely come visit you at Waxaw. Give them a hard time.
It's not far.
It's not far.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have the Administrator's Report.
So we've been working on a lot, but a lot of it's in regular agenda items. Just wanted to let you know that I did get a call today from Board of Elections, and the petition was certified. The charter change petition was certified. I'll be waiting for those actual reports to come in, and so I'll have that at the work session for July, just so y'all are aware. We'll have more discussion at the work session.
Okay. We'll discuss this more at the work session. Got it?
All right.
Got it. Thank you.
Someone, we gotta get this to Bob, or we all got it. Okay. Any else, or are we?
That's it for her.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Planner's Report. Rohit?
Great. There are a couple of things on the Planner's Report. Just quickly, just want to touch back on the code reorganization, which is that just yesterday, we began the process of reviewing the reorganization. It's real good. All of the code is, you know, in the right place, and it's fluid, and there are not contradictions. It's really good, and we're also transitioning to their online hosting platform for our code, which is also very easy to use, and it'll make future amendments really easy to process and to review. Like Chadlin could have an account and could just make a comment, and then we could, I could have an account and then, you know, respond to his comment, like do track changes, just like we're, so it's really easy. Can't wait. And I'll be presenting the full, you know, presentation at a later meeting. Okay. Does, so the next, the next item is the rezoning to commercial corridor district. So at council's request, when they came last time in February, the council wanted the planning board to review that property and its viability for commercial. And so at the last planning board meeting, they decided that it would be viable for commercial being on Providence Road, and also that since it's a conditional district, it allows council the flexibility to, you know, discuss conditions with them, to talk about what they, what the council would find appropriate, and the applicant was amenable to, you know, negotiating certain things.
Okay. So can I interrupt a little?
Yeah.
So the planning board said that it was okay to keep it that way, but we still haven't approved the land use plan.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
I mean, I don't see a reason to have a conversation about this until the land use plan has been approved, and we, council, has said that we want that area to be a conditional district. Yeah, commercial corridor conditional district. Because I don't know how I feel about that, and I still don't want to have a conversation with these guys until we've had a conversation about it as we progress with the land use plan.
Sure.
And that's how I feel. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I feel like...
No, that's fine, because the next thing I was gonna say is that, given that, are you willing to have a pre-application meeting with them? And so if you're...
I'm not.
If you're thinking no, then...
Yeah.
Well, again, even if they were to come and present to us and stuff, we, to her point, we haven't made a decision, you know, I mean, so it doesn't, doesn't really make sense, especially if that's, that's probably one of the areas of discussion, if you will.
Yeah. And I mean, I appreciate that planning board has, you know, still thinks that that's a good idea, but we haven't voted on that, so.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I think waiting is prudent at this point.
Bob?
Bob?
Yeah, I totally agree. Yeah, I'm with you, Kim, you know, and Joe.
So we're not saying no.
Yeah.
We're just saying, we're just saying through this, which we're so close to getting, and then what we can present.
Right, right. So it's pretty clear. I mean, I can tell them that they'll be fine, you know, we're holding off on any meeting until the council approves the land use.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine, and it'll be some, some few months from now.
Okay.
Some few months.
Yeah. Let's just be generic for now.
It'll be sometime in the future.
Okay. So, and the next thing is that we received two applications for conditional use permits. It's pools that are in the rear yard that abut a side yard, and I just wanted to ask in advance, because it's getting late in the summer, and I wanted to ask your consideration to, on the work session meeting, call for the public hearing to be held at the next meeting, August 11, so that that will be enough time for us to get the notices out, and so, you know, instead of calling it at the August meeting to be held at September, that, you know, that basically, you know, gets rid of the whole summer for these people.
You know these pools aren't gonna be built for their summer anyway, right?
Yeah, but...
They can start.
But the...
Yeah, but there's still not going to be use it until next spring.
Yeah, I guess the main...
But it's, I mean, Rohit, I mean, I'm fine if you want to put a, press a call for the public hearing.
Yes, yes. That's all I'm asking for. If you would consider calling for a public hearing to be held on August 11.
I'm fine with that.
I'd go that. June, July 30.
Think of the kids.
They're still not, but you know what? But if it makes them happy, sure, we can, I'm fine putting that on there to call for.
I thought you got rid of the CUPs for pools and the...
It had, we discussed it, and I think it was consensus on both the planning board and council side that we would leave it as is.
Yeah, so that we could look at it just to make sure that it's not egregious.
I thought we went through them. My bad.
We did. We did go through it, but we left it there.
We did go through the process of considering removing it and left it.
Right.
All right. There are, there are a couple of things that have come up between then, yesterday. I did find out that the ETJ application that was going to be heard at the Board of Commissioners meeting yesterday was actually postponed, because the county is working on their comprehensive plan, and the board said, let the planning department finish their, their comprehensive plan, and then we'll look at the ETJs. And we're not the only ones. Waxaw is also applying for one, and they're gonna get pushed. And it's probably gonna be around December, maybe a few months after that, where they look at this.
Could you send us that letter, right?
Yeah.
Did you see that letter to you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. It's probably, they probably questioned it, because you called him Larry, not Jerry.
No.
Thank you.
Too soon.
Jerry.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Too soon.
She went there. She did.
Yes, I do, Eddie. Yes, I do. Sorry, go ahead, Rohit. Sorry.
No, that's, that's all for that, so we're just gonna have to wait for a little while before ETJ gets a look at that.
Okay. Can I ask a question about the land use plan?
Uh, ours or theirs?
Ours. Yeah. So we, we gave you all of our changes.
Mm-hmm.
What are we supposed to be working on now? Can I get my copy back?
Um, I still have to present it. We haven't had a planning board meeting.
Oh, okay. You have, oh. Oh, I just...
The next one is next one.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay.
Right. So I can get yours back.
So no homework for us?
Not at the moment.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Good. Okay.
Okay. And one more thing is that we're talking about removing that tree that is on the road.
Oh, yeah, when I saw that we were gonna close the road, and the workers closed the road.
Yeah, they're looking, the church really wants to remove that tree, because it's got a crack and it's leaning into the road.
This one?
Yeah.
And I looked at it yesterday, and it, it is a danger to everyone that drives down this road, because it is just about to fall over. I've been part of the email string that's been going on with Pastor Scott and with the DOT, and the DOT guy, I don't, I don't know, I don't know him, he's probably doing his job. But I don't know why in government, whether it's local, state, or federal, that it is their job and duty to just try to throw a roadblock up.
Did they say, did they say we could close the road?
No, he said, no, just, just close one lane, and I challenge anybody to go over there and close one lane and take that tree down without hurting someone.
Yeah.
So, and he's, so I emailed him back and said...
Has he been out there to look at it?
No. He just, he's just trying to, again, it's ingrained in government to just not go, you know what, you're right, I trust you. The guy that cuts down trees has said, he's been doing it for 20 years, said there's no way you can take that tree out without shutting down that road.
Okay. So now we're waiting on them to agree to shut down both lanes? Because I saw that we, that they were gonna close it, and then I saw the one that said that was on.
Right. Just today, the DOT said, we're not gonna mobilize our resources to close the road, and if you want to, you can close one lane, but you need us to close both lanes, and we're not doing it.
I think there's a...
What if we just close both lanes?
So, I think, you just cut the tree down. You cut the tree down, and I guarantee you, they'll close both lanes.
There you go, because it's gonna fall across.
It's gonna close the lanes anyway.
Closes the lanes.
You told me to cut the tree down.
I mean, I, I mean, okay.
It's not that simple.
Stop traffic if it lands both lanes and access the road.
They're gonna put up a detour anyway.
Right. That's what I'm saying, so.
That's just, well, government issues.
Can we, I mean, obviously, wait, did they tell us that, or did they tell the church that?
They told the church. We're kind of just facilitating the discussion.
Can we get in there and try to get that taken care of?
Sure.
So, so is DOT willing to take the liability on?
Yeah.
Okay, well, bottom line is, what's the penalty? If we do, if we go ahead and close the road down, close both lanes long enough to not cut that tree down, what's the penalty to, to, to that?
They're not gonna know about it until after it's done.
Well, more importantly, is like, let's, let's, let's call this, if there was an accident, it was fatality, liability.
They would close that road down, so you'd have officers, so maybe we go to the sheriff's department. No, what I'm saying is... I want you to look at how close that tree is to that road.
No, I know, it is right on top of it.
What I'm saying is, we... I challenge Mr. Pressler, I challenge Mr. Pressler to take that tree out with any tree company and do it with closing just one lane. Does anyone want to see that?
But, but my point is, is if we can go to the sheriff's department and just say, look, we're gonna ask you to close the road down for, and time it with the tree company.
The sheriff's department's gonna have to get DOT's approval to do it. That's the problem. Now, if we just get out there, I know, but if we just get out there with some barricades and be like, the road's closed, sorry.
We went to Sheriff Kathy.
I know, but who are they gonna, who are they gonna call? They're not gonna know it's not approved.
Who wants to take the liability? That's the problem.
Right. It is liability. The penalty is that. It's just a risk. If something happens, and we did something without DOT's permission or proper procedures, we're on the hook.
Okay. Well, then, let's, let's get up with DOT and get this taken care of.
That's, yeah, that's a better way to handle it.
I think it's a better...
Do you think I was the other with my stop sign?
I don't, trees being taken down with one lane closed.
Yeah, it's not hard.
And that's crazy.
We're talking about...
Hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to mitigate that.
Okay. So you guys got that?
We'll continue fighting for that.
That's all you have on the Planner's Report.
Is it? Okay. Christina? Sorry. No, I meant roads, because Joe's not...
Yeah, so I have...
I need this book so he can have it.
I do have some stuff going on with roads, but we, I've actually got some, an item that we added to the agenda that's associated with that, and I've got some stuff at the work session, so I'm not gonna report anything here. I went to the work session.
Okay. On the roads.
Yep.
Okay. Next up is deputies' report.
This is, I have new questions.
Have you met everybody?
Not everybody.
Since I just met you tonight.
So we have two officers now, two new officers. This is Mason Montgomery. He's been with the organization, I think, maybe six years?
Seven.
Seven years. First job, first day on the job about 10 days ago, I believe.
I guess three working days and 10 business days.
So...
Where are you from?
Uh, live in Unionville.
Okay.
So it's a little drive.
All right. So always been from this area?
Uh, no, I grew up in Unionville my whole time of life.
Okay.
Went to Piedmont, graduated Piedmont, and now I've got three kids and...
Well, I think I'll speak for council, that we appreciate what we do, and that the last thing you would want to do is defund any of your resources, so I'll be on the record for that.
Me too.
I don't know about the rest of council, but that's it, but thank you for your, for your service and for doing what you do. It's a job that is very, sometimes thankless, at the worst.
So, the reports there, you got any questions?
Yeah, I looked through the report. Did anyone get a chance to look over your report? Any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. All right, so we're moving on. Thank you. Next up, we have Planning Board Chair Report. John, I think I saw you there.
You're muted, John. You're muted, John.
John Jones?
Am I on yet?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, I'm still burning, I'm old, you remember that?
I'm chasing it.
Let, let me start by expressing my deep and sincere appreciation for everything Barbie's done for me as well. Um, you know, I, I, every time something comes up, I've always said, you tell me the right way to do this stuff and she's always kept me in line. And, you know, it, I haven't been around as long as, as Joe has, so I've, I've still got a lot to learn. And so, but she has just been a tremendous help to, to me and the planning board, so I will really, really, really miss her. Next, uh, Rohit mentioned, uh, upcoming CUPs for a couple pool permits. And the planning board in the past evidently has done several things, you know, handled the CUP just as a simple recommendation. And evidently that was not the correct way to handle that. And as I understand, that we, we need to handle it even in the planning board as a quasi judicial, um, hearing. And so, in that, and that's the plan that we will adopt going forward on this, these, these two permit applications. But in that regard, I would like to request that Chaplain be there to make sure that we do this properly.
Is this supposed to be quasi judicial?
Um, no, you can actually do, no, yours is informational and you can have a hearing or just call it information. But the only quasi judicial part will be before this board, so.
Okay, so it's, you know, we, we've had this conversation, uh, back and forth and not knowing, you know, because evidently in the past it's been handled one way and then another way and, you know, we're going to make sure that we do it properly.
It should just be one, one quasi judicial hearing and the evidence will be decided based upon that hearing before this board. Yours can be informational and, well, less formal, so you don't have all the formalities.
All right, so it's back to, it's just a, if, call it informal, um, permit, you know, CUP review.
Correct, correct.
But you're also, they're also recommending, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so you guys can recommend what you think, now that doesn't mean we're gonna listen to you.
Okay, yeah, I understand that it, that we'll be making a recommendation.
Okay.
You know, but, all right, so, so that, that makes me feel a little better on that one, so that's, that's fine. Next item is that, you know, I know that y'all have reviewed the, uh, the text of the land use plan and that's on our agenda, uh, next week to, uh, look at your comments, but, and we're, we're very deep into reviewing the map, the proposed maps and everything. And in, in, uh, that regard, uh, hopefully this next meeting we will come to some finalization, but before the, the maps and the quote final land use plan comes back to you or, you know, review and approval, I think that we need to have within the planning board, uh, some public involvement meetings to bring that up to them. So, so that it's not just on you, the council, to have, have these meetings, so that we can get the public input. And what I'd like to do is have two meetings, you know, an evening meeting and a daytime meeting. And I mean, and if, if the council would like to be able to be there to at least listen, not, you know, to what the public has to say, I'd like to throw these dates out for the council to consider. And so, what I'm thinking at, for the, uh, evening meeting, perhaps on the 12th or 13th.
August, did you say?
Yeah, August. And of course, this is subject to, well, even, I think that we can have a, a public input even if we're not final, final, final on the maps. But I think we're far enough along to present stuff to the, to the community. And because that may, that might modify what we think we need to do on the maps. So, an evening meeting maybe on August 12th or 13th and a daytime meeting a week later, August 19th or 20th. So, you know, you know, I don't wanna get crossways so that council cannot, you know, it, it conflicts with something that you're doing, so I'm throwing it out to you as well.
I'll be available during the day on the 19th or 20th, I would not be available the evening on the 12th or 13th.
Okay, so.
Will school have started?
Yep.
I have no idea.
You're available.
I'm available for all the four days.
So, the days we're looking at, the 12th?
12th and 13th evening, one of those two days, and then either the 19th or 20th at night, I mean, in the day.
And if you, if you have any other, you know, these are somewhat just pulled out of the air in an, in an effort to, to hold the meetings, but also keep the process moving as, as quickly as we can without being, you know, foolish, but I mean, I wanna keep things moving.
The only conflict I have is Wednesday, the 19th, I'd have to do it after 10:30, 11:00. So, I'll leave it to council to decide if there's, if there's a date that looks good and we wanna plug it in and.
Well, he wants to have two, one at night and one during the day.
Right. Whatever those dates are.
I can't do the 12th because of the COVID reason. Only 12th.
And I don't know that it's imperative that if all five of you be there, I'm just opening up.
I could do the 13th.
You know, that conversation came up previously regarding public involvement meetings.
Right.
So, that's the reason I'm, I'm bringing it up to you.
Okay, well, how about, how about during the day on the 20th and I'll be there?
Okay.
Everyone good on that?
I, I don't know yet, work is gonna dictate what I can do at this point, but, uh, as far as I'm concerned right now, I don't have anything, but it could change.
Okay.
John, what time are you thinking, in the morning time?
10:30. 10:30.
Yeah, 10, yeah, probably 10:30 or something like that.
Okay.
And because, quite honestly, I've not even presented this to the planning board yet, but, but your meeting now, and I wanted to, to get your, your comments first.
13.
Okay, how about the 13th?
13th and 14th.
In the evening at 6:30. Don't leave your eyebrow me.
I barely made this one.
Okay, 7 o'clock.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, 7 o'clock on the 13th.
I'd probably do that.
7:00 PM, August 13th?
Yep.
Joint meeting of planning board and, and also.
That'll be a public involvement meeting, so we just need to call that there will be a possible quorum, correct?
And, and I guess it's gonna have to be offered as, as virtual meeting as well.
That's fine.
Everything else, but.
That's fine.
Right. We'll have both of them.
Well, I think we should have the doors open, we can have stuff set up outside, we can kinda, you know, make it nice.
We'll have, we'll have all.
We'll have to do much, you know, a lot of planning and everything for this, but we've got, we've got to, to present to the, the community.
Okay, I think that's great.
Cam, you do, if they, you, uh, do you think we could do it at the barn down, you know, at the park? I mean, would that be kind of a neat place to, as a venue, just as a.
We don't have.
Yeah, we don't have wifi there and so it would not be possible to have virtual option there.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That was what I was gonna say, you know, it'll offer plenty of space, but the, 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 the virtual part of it would be a problem.
Cam, can we get a thingy?
Like a hotspot?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but it, this is a constant like stream of a lot of data, so it's better to be wired. Like when we were doing this with a hotspot, it was choppy.
Okay.
So.
That, I.
Yeah, it's better.
I'm like, John, I'm old, I don't know, I'm not good with this stuff.
Yeah, no, as soon as we started doing a wire connection, it was like smooth, so we gotta just stick with it. But I think between this room and right outside here, but just like.
We can spread it out.
A bunch of tables, like spread out and then a virtual option, I think we should.
We can make it nice, it'll be good. All right, so John, you're gonna talk to planning board about that next week?
Yeah, works out, I'm not even presenting it to them yet.
Okay.
So, we're looking at the 13th and on the 20th at 10:30 in the morning?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Look at that, somebody already sent me an invitation to it.
All right, just leaving on my, on my notes.
I did?
Yeah.
We'll get the date scheduled, um, we'll get information back from Mr. Jones and have it at the work session on July 30th, so you can be aware.
Wow, I'm just putting it in my.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, John, anything else?
It's all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, next up we have, uh, PRG Chair Report.
John's not here, so we.
John, Beresich?
Beresich, so he's not here, so he didn't have anything?
No.
Okay, all right, moving on.
Would you, would you want me to update you from?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
So, um, we, we had, we had a good meeting, we went over like the barn rental fees which are in there and, um, you know, we talked about kind of some of the different projects and like at the park, that's almost finished, the trail's almost finished, they're almost finished with the Tullamore Two Trail. Um, I will let everyone know that, uh, Park Truck and Greenway was a little disappointed that we got rid of the, um, parking lot at Tullamore and they would have appreciated us talking to them about that before we had done that. Um, so they had some issues with the text and the land use plan, uh, when, where we asked them about providing secure parking. So, but that was, you know, I just told them, it was our decision and. That was it.
Tullamore's the biggest issue.
Yeah.
Concerning itself. I think we've required.
And then, oh, and the National Night Out is not on here.
It is on.
Where?
Business number three.
Sure is, okay, that was the other thing, National Night Out. Sorry. Oh, my goodness, yes, that was the other thing, that was the other big topic of conversation, so.
Okay.
We'll talk about that.
Pull us in.
Oh, I will, once we get there, I'll put it on there.
All right, thank you all for, all the chairs that, for the reporting on that. Um, next up we have consent agenda, I need a motion to the, to approve the consent agenda as stated.
So moved.
Holes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have Village Hall, are we gonna?
Yep, we're talking about it.
So, I have, I actually have an item on the agenda, um, in reference to the, um, contracts for Urban Architect, for revising the site plans. I did wanna pass this around, this is a, kind of a rendering of what y'all had discussed at the current site that we're at now. Rohit actually put that together, so nothing formal, very conceptual in nature, based on our discussions and kind of what we've, um, seen as y'all's envisioned to a village hall here at this current site. And we have sent that over to the church for their review, um, to see if, you know, they are interested in pursuing conversations with us. Uh, in the meantime, we are still moving forward with, trying to figure out where, you know, where council wants to go with the corner site down here, which we will talk about in a subsequent meeting, or, sorry, a subsequent item in the meeting. I don't have anything else to report, um, the church requested this, I sent a copy to, of these renderings to the church and also the, um, elevations for the two options that council was considering last year.
Okay, do you want us to talk about this like now or when we get to the stuff then?
Um, so unless y'all have any changes that are desired for here, and again, this is just conceptual, it's just something so we can show the church kind of what council envisioned, um.
So, we, so, okay, so where are we with the church? We've sent them this and the pictures of what we want the house to look, or the house, the town hall to look like, sorry.
Yes.
And so, we are waiting for them to get back to us.
That's correct.
Okay.
Ketsmer Lyon and I had a conversation with the elders probably about a month ago, maybe not quite a month ago. And their, um, request was to get a copy of what I just passed out to you guys and, um, so, you know, we've done that and they were supposed to get back with us and if they, you know, liked it or not, or if they wanted to pursue further discussions, they did advise that they would not envision making any decisions in the next couple of months based on, I guess, COVID and the situation that's going on, so that's kind of where it was left, um.
A couple of months.
I'll see what I can do to talk to them.
I mean, I just don't wanna sit on it, if we're not gonna move forward.
No, 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 I, listen, I totally agree, I mean, this is something we, we need to get moved, moving on.
Okay.
Let's not continue to just drag this thing and let it get dragged.
Yes, I agree, let's keep poking and prodding, moving it forward, so, yeah, if you could do that thing, that'd be awesome.
I'll take care of it.
Cool beans, I like this though.
I, I just have one comment about it and I don't know if it's that important right now or not, but, um, I would like to see some type of a buffer in front of that parking lot between the parking lot and road.
Oh, yeah, we'll definitely put some screening up, for sure.
But other than that, I kinda like it, it, uh, it kinda separates the parking from the building and puts the building out back where it's very accessible to the trail system.
Yep, I like that.
Yeah, I agree. Again, this is just conceptual, we.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, he does pretty good job. But that's the only, the only feedback I have on it.
No, I agree, we'll get some nice crepe murdles and some love bushes, we'll make it nice.
Personally, personally, if I was looking at this, I would want you to be able to see the village hall and none of this with trees and stuff.
Well, the mature trees, you can see right underneath them, so you, it's very, very visual from the road, it just sits back.
Right.
And we would, you know, if we actually hired somebody to do some renderings like this, they would go with our coordinates, we have buffer landscape coordinates that they would actually depict in a, in an image of the foundation plan. So, this is just, this is really just high level, this is kind of what we're, what we're envisioning.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, the placement of everything looks good to me.
And I'm of the agreement that we, we need to, we need to make a decision so we can make a decision.
Yep.
If that makes any sense.
Can I, can I answer a question? Can I ask a question? Um, and I know this is just a, this is just a sketch, this is a rendering, you know, we haven't even decided if this is the place it's gonna be, but I just have a question. As beautiful as we wanna make the village hall and being a centerpiece, I'm just asking, I was of the impression that we would raise the current building that we're in now, that would be where the parking lot would be and wouldn't we wanna showcase from the road, the beautiful village hall? I mean, supposed to, I stood off set?
Just never hear it. Right.
Nobody listened.
That was, that was the original sketch and then the comments were to push it back, uh, much farther back and so that's what, that's, that's what this came.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be able to see it through the trees, like underneath the trees and it'll probably be very nicely, um, framed with the trees over there. Again, this is, this is just a for the church, it may not, you know, there may be, who knows what's over there that we, not be, like right where that spot is, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think we're gonna have it like right, I think the parking lot's gonna be in the front.
There'd be, there'd be a lot more.
What would be, I'm just asking, you know, as we're, we're exploring opportunity, where would the, what would be happening with where the current village Marvin offices are? What's going there if that building is gonna be raised?
That's up to the church to decide.
Yeah, it's not up to.
It's not our church, it's, they would either rent it to a family or give it.
Oh, oh.
I, I think we eliminated the, or the fact that we would be knocking this down because of concerns of what we, that may lead to, but, um, but I think we're leaving that up to the church.
So, we haven't decided anything in terms of demolition or any, any type of those, those terms with the church, I mean, the last that, um, Ketsmer Lyon and I had spoke, I think they were of the opinion that the church would want us to demolish this property, so again, that discussion is up in the air, there'll be a lot more opportunity for us to go through the renderings, the placement, the landscaping, um.
This is, this is, this is just to get the church comfortable with about where it would go, kind of how it would look, that kind of thing.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, just a comment, I think that, um, where the, where it's gonna sit, it's gonna be very nicely offset by the trees and everything in the front. I think you're gonna like the way it's gonna look, once you see a, a rendering.
We still got approval yet though, so we're, we're ways away.
And that'd be a nice parking lot for people to come and walk, uh.
Yeah, walk the trail.
At, at the downtown corridor, go shop, get some lunch, maybe a little coffee.
So, Kim, so.
All right, um, so we're all done with that, that's all you have to add?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, next up we have unfinished business, uh, consider approval of Village Center renderings, discussion of distribution and direction to seek a new artist for additional renderings.
We're getting, we're getting a new artist?
Um, yeah, so the, the main thing is that the, uh, direction last time was that you wanted me to rehire the same person, but that person is unavailable for additional renderings. So, she was able to make some of the requested revisions from last time, um, which include street labels, um, putting Scottlet's parking lots in the back.
Rohit's talking.
Sorry.
Sorry.
He was asking. Okay, sorry.
Did you take this house and just go it on the, uh?
I did, yes.
I was like, wait, why does that look?
I'm not, I'm not an artist and he said I could, so.
I was, I was like, that looks so familiar and then I was like, oh.
You caught that, okay.
Come on, I'm quick, Rohit.
Okay, anyway, so she made some of the renderings that were requested at last meeting, she added the label, she moved Scottlet's parking lots to the back and added some buffering from the parking lots, et cetera. But she said she was unavailable to do the additional renderings that were, uh, requested of Adele and Previs' properties. And since the direction, I just wanted to be thorough, the direction was to rehire her for that, so I wanted to seek new direction to, you know, um, find, to look for someone else that could do those renderings. And since the direction, I just wanted to be thorough, the direction was to rehire her for that, so I wanted to seek new direction to, you know, find, to look for someone else that could do those renderings instead of her because she's not available.
Okay.
We need to get them done, so we should look for somebody else. I wouldn't know where to steer you, but.
Right, I'll, I'll, I'll do what I can to, you know, find avenues, find people, but I do need to find someone else because she's not available.
What kind of budget do we have for this? I know this is a little, but what's in the budget for, or what, I don't even know what an artist costs to do a rendering.
What I could probably suggest is anybody from the, from that workshop team might have some avenues to explore in that regard. They, I'm sure these people, I mean, one of them's a landscape architect, so I'm sure he's got, you know, the, the lead guy's a landscape architect, so I'm sure he's got people that can do.
Yeah, good point.
That kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I like this so far and I'd really like to see kind of around the corner how that, how they are interpreting that and kind of what the, what the landowner's thoughts are there and kind of what your guys, like what you guys have talked about kind of around that corner. So I, I mean, I like this.
So the previous person did this for a certain amount, but then she had like 50 bucks, she did this, a little bit of changes, but what would it cost to do? Do we know?
For a whole new rendering, I mean, these are approximately.
What do you like about this?
I'm asking.
I mean, yeah, no, it's a fair question.
Cause we're going to a whole new rendering.
Right, and I think these were a little undervalued. I'm not sure that, it was, it was a kind of luck that I found her. I don't know if I can get, again, $50 for rendering is a little low.
The guy who did our master plan revisions, destination by design, they had some really good graphics and aesthetics for some of the projects they've done.
I might have to ask around and see what it would cost, cause I kind of just, at this, at this time, I threw a price for a set of renderings and she said that was fine. So I don't know what per.
I would talk to that person. I would talk to your CTNI people and come back to us at the work session with the price and then we'll just, we'll make a decision at the work session.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Well, actually, wait, we're not done with this item because now that the, the requests, the requested revisions were made, what now, are you guys ready for me to like make these into posters and say?
No, if we're having them redone, no.
Well, not these redone. They're just new ones.
They're, they're talking about adding, just going ahead and doing some all new ones together so they're uniform. So we'll, we'll bring it back to council's work session and y'all can make some decisions.
Right, that's what we're talking about, correct? They all look the same.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It's not like.
I mean, this is good for what we're.
No, I love, I love this. Me too.
But then we go to the next person.
I mean, I would hand, I would hand this stuff to them and be like, here's what we've got so far. This is what we like, kind of fix it like this and then bring it around the corner.
Okay, so no distribution.
Just wait on these, yes.
Sure.
Yes.
So we're a little more comfortable with what the, the entire project, then we'll put it out.
Then it'll look consistent.
Correct. And what I, what I had said to John Jones earlier today was, I would much rather go out and ask for, you know, everything on my Christmas wish list. And then if I don't get everything, I can kind of bring it in, but I'd much rather put out everything because I can always take away and it's a much harder to go in and add.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Okay, fair enough.
Is that good now?
That's the.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, unfinished, we have discussion consideration of law enforcement contract.
So over the last several months, we have been in discussion about our sheriff's contract and revisions that were needed to the initial agreement that was conducted, I think in 2009, that hasn't been updated since then. There's some language in there that referenced three officers with some contingency language about some annexation. So we've just kind of cleaned it up a little bit and we've proposed an addendum that addresses some of the concerns that council had. In a nutshell, the addendum has actually tracked, changed in your agenda packets, but it does allow for the 30-day termination as requested. It does allow for deputies to respond to outside Marvin calls due to exigent circumstances only and that we only pay for deputies that are assigned to Marvin. These revisions have not been reviewed or seen by the sheriff himself, so I'm not sure if they're willing to accept these changes, but this is kind of what the attorney and I worked out that was a happy medium between the two requests.
My biggest concern is, is the one where, again, we all pay Union County taxes. Union County is responsible for providing a police force. We are paying extra from our own money to pay for our officers to be here.
Yes.
I want more teeth. And when we have our officers on duty, they're here. That, you know, because if they get called away, then what are we paying for? What do we get reimbursed? I just, and the wording, that's, the only answer question is the wording on that, is how much teeth of it? Because at the end, it sounds like it comes up, it comes down to the supervisor. Well, this was important, so we, we had to call them away. Is all I can say.
Can we find out how often that has happened in the past?
The last time I checked, it was one or two times in the past five years.
Okay.
So, and can we, can we get that, can we get the actual number?
Yes.
And like find out what it actually.
Yeah, do they have a specific criteria that, that they go by for?
And how many times has it actually happened when our, when our officer was on duty that they got called away for an exorbitant amount of time that costs us money?
And then, well, if we're gonna do that, then include, when we look into that, include how many times they had to leave their post from directing traffic. Again.
Yeah, but we don't, we, but if they leave there, we don't pay them.
Yeah, we don't, we, the, the off-duty coordinator works that out and if they are called off, he, he makes it back home.
Totally different.
Right, okay. So, and that was the other point I wrote when I read it. There was nothing in here regarding off-duty.
Yeah, off-duty, off-duty is completely separate.
Separate contract.
Yes.
Yep. It's not even a contract. It's basically like a.
I agree.
Yeah.
So we'll get this information and we'll put it on the work session for July 30th.
Yeah.
Okay.
And as, I mean, as long as that number's not nutty, I'm fine with this contract, the way it is.
And, but they haven't seen it yet.
Correct. That's great. But I'm okay with it.
All right. Everyone else all right?
Yep.
Move, move on.
Bob, you good?
We've lost you.
I'm good. Thank you.
Bob, we can't see. Oh, there you are. We could see your beard.
You just had to speak.
We couldn't see your beard.
Next up, we have discussion consideration of board of adjustment appointments and reappointments.
So this is actually something Barbie was working on. It looks like I'm gonna complete it. Mike Farley, David Humphreys and Tom Maher have expressed interest in being reappointed to the board of adjustments, so I just need a motion to approve those. Oh, I'm sorry, and then Mike Gilboy as well as an alternate. Sorry, edit it.
No, we, he will be, he can be on, he wanted to be on board of adjustments.
Okay, so then Mike Gilboy, Tom Maher, David Humphreys and Mike Farley to be appointed to the board of adjustments based on what's provided in your agenda packets.
So we need, we still need one more to fulfill the.
We need one.
So we'll keep an add out?
We need one and two, and two alternates.
Okay.
So we still need one more person and two alternates. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike Farley, David Humphreys, Tom Maher and Mike Gilboy to the board of adjustments.
With terms?
With terms expiring on 3/1/21?
They're three-year terms, it looks like.
Oh, 3/1/23. 3/1/23.
So moved. Further discussion? Holes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then just a note from a direction standpoint, we'll keep posting the.
We will, yes.
And, and we, and we, we will get up with these people about their paperwork.
Yes, we will.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have discussion consideration of removal of planning board member Christopher Smith.
Mayor, may I just give a brief background? Mr. Smith was contacted and told that this would likely be a place upon an agenda if he didn't resign. And then he was told that Article 7, one of the planning board rules provide that a member may be removed with or without cause, but the catalyst for bringing this item before this board was his response as a planning board member to the welcome to the new Marvin Village Center map on the next door media. And, and that's just for the background information. And I believe he may be here. We, we were informed that he would have an opportunity to address the council if he so desired. And I think Councilman Lyon is going to discuss this further if he so desires.
Yes, we do.
I want to take the time to thank you for the time that I was able to serve on the planning board. If you choose to remove it, that's your decision, but I think that most people would recognize it as a partisan political move. Not really related to anything I said as a resident on, on the supplemental application. Again, thank you for allowing me to serve for the planning board. It's been a generous pleasure. And then I will provide written comments in the running for value to follow into the public record.
He said he would follow up with some written comments. He'd like to.
Um, I, I'd like to just, again, this is something that's not, it's certainly not enjoyable to do. And sure, we have some handouts here. Everyone should have them. I'd like to put into record, I don't know if there's a way to show it on the video here. Probably exhibit one would be what was actually presented. So exhibit one is actually the, the map that was presented on 1/21 at the meeting.
Which meeting? Planning board?
Or our meeting.
It was.
The planning board.
Planning board.
I believe it was the planning board meeting, yes. So that one was the one that was presented. Then exhibit number two would be the map.
Yeah, I don't have that one, but I can put it on the camera.
You can put it up. Please put it on the camera. And as you look at, as you look at this particular map, I'd like to read from Mr. Smith. I'm on the Marvin Village Planning Board. I had several people reach out to me because of this posting. So I thought it appropriate to respond. The diagram being discussed is consistent with plans presented to the planning board on January 21st. I'd ask you to please to go back and look at the two maps and the differences in the two maps. These plans were presented to the full board by the town planner as being actively under discussion by all the property owners in the village. And a diagram remarkably similar to this was circulated. We discussed it at length because the scale of the proposed development was much larger than several of the board members had anticipated. A brew pub on that corner has also been discussed in session in between sessions. I have been told by direct participants in these conversations that a pub being built there and plans for it being developed. Now, I'm wanting to stick with the facts. I'm wanting to, to, to say, I don't, I want to stay with what's in front of us. The first I saw this, I, like my council members, said, did I miss a meeting? Because I don't remember, I don't remember discussing a brew pub. I don't remember discussing a, a, let's see here, a massage parlor. I'm surprised we left out the strip club between the, between the church and the, and the elementary school. I, I can put my own foot in my own mouth, but when, when, when people from, and I will, I will extend this to everyone. Whether it's council, whether it's the planning board, the PRG board, any type of board, takes information, uses propaganda and puts words in our mouths that we, this is, this was supposedly, we were, we were full board doing this. I don't know, council, Councilman Vandenberg, did, is this something? I don't know. Did you vote on putting a brew pub there?
No, I did not.
Did you, Mr. Mayor?
I did not.
Mr. Markelies, Councilman Markelies, did you vote on having an Asian massage parlor, a mall, a Walmart neighborhood market in the Village of Marvin?
No, sir.
I, I, I know I did. And I, I don't, I, when, when I hear stuff called political and I hear jostled around in many different ways. I'd ask you to, I'd refer you back to those maps and I refer you back to the propaganda that was sent out. And every person that had, had an active call in putting it out and supporting it, and I, I didn't make this up. This was the, this was the direct verbiage coming from Mr. Smith. So as council said, Article 7 dash one of the planning board rules and procedures states, the planning board members serve at the pleasure of the village council and may be removed at any time, with or without cause. I would think in this, this, this particular instance, it is with. I believe that Mr. Smith's actions provide cause for removal. His response to the welcome to the new Marvin Village Center map, which includes references to Asian massage parlors, give validity to this information, misinformation. I move to say that we cannot have planning board, any board, any council, any staff acting contrary to the goals of the village council. I don't trust that the information that is handed to Mr. Smith and shared with Mr. Smith to carry out the village council's goals. And I make a move, I make a motion to remove Mr. Smith from the planning board. And I, and I do that seriously and, and, and all fairness, I do it with, I don't like it. But I, I make the motion to remove Mr. Smith from the planning board.
Give it up to further discussion from any other council members? Someone to comment? Bob?
No, sir.
Nope.
Tim, all right. I don't have any comments at this time, so motion is on the table. All of those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. And we will move on to the next agenda item. Discussion and of NC DOT request to reduce speed limit along Newtown Road.
I'm gonna pass, Mayor Kent, so I'm gonna pass around a, inside your agenda packets, there is a traffic study. I actually asked DOT the request that council had given me at the last council meeting, which was to reduce the speed limit from roundabout to roundabout, or proposed roundabout. And also to take over ownership of this section. The first request obviously is a little easier to reduce the speed limit. However, a traffic study was done not too long ago. Where they recommended to keep the speed limit at 45 miles per hour, so therefore they are not complying with the request.
Where are you talking about? I thought roundabout to roundabout was 35 miles an hour. Let's see. I'm sorry. I'm just not following where you're talking about.
Speed limit on Newtown is appropriate for, I'm sorry, it is 35. We were, we were requesting 35 to 25, I believe, as well.
Okay, okay.
So 35 is.
The lowest they're willing to go?
Yes, correct, yeah. And the traffic study is in your agenda packet, so you can see all the details of how they, you know, reported that.
It's a great place to get speeders because people haul honey through here, Mason.
Just saying. So currently it's what?
Here, 35. I want to make it 25.
So we're still in discussions with Travis Pressler for getting the ownership of that section of roads. That's gonna be a little bit of a lengthier process, but we are in discussions right now.
Okay, good, because I clocked it and it's, it's right between .5 and .6 miles, so it's not even a mile from the farthest roundabout to where the new roundabout would be. So it's like, it's barely over half a mile. So it would be great. I mean, nice stretch of road. We can own it, slow it down.
Read our gun.
Be great.
I also wanted to.
Whatever we use these days.
So I will hopefully have some more information for council at the July work session in terms of taking over ownership of that proposed area. I do want to mention, there was a public comment. I do want to mention, there was a public comment that was made earlier in reference to speed limits on Marvin School Road.
Yeah.
Same thing has been done at that road. We requested this actually a little bit into the summer of last year.
Yeah.
That traffic study is provided, that it just passed out, so we have done that as well.
Can, can we get back to that resident and let them know that we have requested it? Unfortunately, you did. Okay.
It's just out of our hands, and it's unfortunate.
And we've asked, we've asked, we've asked.
And we can't, I don't think we'll ever see us owning that road.
No, but I'd love to have this one here.
Why, why, I said it'd be great to have, own roundabout to roundabout and control the whole district, but most towns have that, quite frankly, so.
But I did clock it, so I wanted everybody to know that.
Two comments, two comments I'd like to ask. In the case of, again, we're doing this to try to control the traffic as we discussed in the last meeting, and, you know, this is an issue, and as well as the speeding and everything else that goes along with it. Sheriff Deputy Montgomery, you know, can we put a, can we sit there with a, with a radar gun and, you know, really make it where, you know, on Marvin School Road, on Marvin Road, in other words, I don't know where in particular and where you're designated, but can we make it where, I don't want to, I, I just want to say, can we make it not desirable to speed? You know, you're sitting there with a gun and, and, you know, radar gun, and you're, you're, and you're monitoring, and people know you're going to be there, they know you're going to be on Marvin Road, and they know you're going to be on Marvin School Road. Again, another deterrent, especially if you start giving, giving out tickets, it's not going to be hard. You know, people are speeding faster than 35 in there, as we know. Is that something you kind of put on a schedule? Or how do you determine where you're going to be on a given day?
Well, we don't want to give it out, Bob, so people can avoid it.
Well, we also, I don't, I think somewhere in the contract it says we can't, we should be involved in directing them where to be and what to do.
We have some say in it.
Yeah, we have some leeway.
Okay.
But I, I think if we're going to write that in the contract, we go back to the contract, they said, well, give us a, a ability to say, while they're on, we'd like them to spend...
We do, we do, yeah.
We have some, we have some more language now.
Okay.
But communication. They still have the final authority, which they have to have legally, but we have input now.
Right. But I've seen them parked on, right on, off a saddle, off, they just pulled off the side of the road where they're on Marvin Road. I've seen them obviously on Joe's car. Rarely do I see them in this area here.
It's, well, you know, we double our presence here. So that's going to help immediately right there, because we doubled the presence, so that we got 40 more hours a week of patrols. One guy couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Just couldn't.
That's good.
Glad, I'm a second deputy, and we can get a little more presence out there, but I agree, our major thoroughfares are a major problem here with speeders. And they, they, they know that there is no presence, so they don't care.
There is one there.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Yay.
So do my kids and my pets.
Say, if I stop a kid, you'll probably get a phone call, but...
No, I mean, we appreciate that you guys are out here, because...
We're not running our children over.
Right, exactly, is my point.
So we'll have, we will get back with the, the individual that requested that information on Marvin School Road, but we'll have some more information hopefully at the work session to present about taking over the ownership.
Great. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all we have for that?
That's it.
Thank you. Next up, new business, F1, discussion consideration of recognition of the late former mayor, Don Carr, and Nick Dispenzier.
Actually, I was going to turn this over to you guys. I didn't have anything prepared for this.
Well, obviously, we were all sudden with the sudden loss, and was able to go to the wake as well as the funeral, and had a chance to speak to their family, and shared my condolences as well as passed on your, the council's condolences and stuff, and I said that we would be probably very soon discussing something that we would want to do within the town to memorialize him. And even his son had mentioned something about the park, but I, you know, you know, something to be done there, and what he had mentioned to me, which I thought was a great idea, is maybe a bench that we can put in, in the park with his name on it, that his kids could go to, you know, he's got grandkids that he, he was a complete family guy. If you ever talked to him and anything happened to do with his kids, he would stop everything and just, you know, I'll call you back, and it was family first with him. But his son, I learned a lot about Nick. Nick was very, probably quiet about what he used to do in, in law enforcement in New York, and he was, my understanding is, did some crazy stuff back in the day when he was undercover and stuff, so, and you wouldn't think that of Nick, but I, he, his son shared some stories with me, so it was a, a, a nice moment to share that with him and stuff, and when I had mentioned some, something that we could do, and, and this would include probably Don Carr, I didn't know Don as well, but him mentioning something like a bench, I thought was a great idea. And I'm just going to throw that out to you. If you guys have anything else you'd like to, to do, I know we did a flag for another former mayor, I think was put up.
I mean, I like the idea of a bench. I mean, I like the idea of doing something at town hall, like whenever it's built. I definitely think we need to have some sort of, you know, Hall of Fame of, you know...
Some kind of recognition.
Yeah, like wall there, but I think something immediate, I think, you know, a bench would be great.
Because right now for Lanning, I think we just have his picture, and it's way up on the, in the ceiling of the...
That's where he likes to keep an eye on him.
Yeah, he's up high and stuff, but he's, Nick's picture's still up there. But it's hard to even read his name, you know?
Yeah, I mean...
That high, but I just, I thought a bench was, was very appropriate, especially if something like that. But to your point about village hall, but somehow with whatever we get to, and maybe staff can kick around some ideas, or if we as council members come up with other ideas that we could share with staff, and they can bring that back to us, and it would involve the family if they wanted to, to be here, I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the plans are. It's a big house that, if you've ever been to Nick's house and stuff, so she asked me for some references on a painter, that some work that needs to be done, but I don't, that doesn't mean anything, it was just a small job, so I don't think there's any plans for them to move, and I know her, one, one daughter is here in Rock Hill, one is in Seattle, and the other one is, his son is in New York, so...
Well, I think, again, I like the idea of doing a bench for Nick. I'm not sure what we can do for, for Mr. Carr, but I would definitely, you know, I just, I'm not good at that kind of stuff. I mean, I think with town, like town, when village hall's done, then we'll do something kind of across the board, but I'd like to do something now. So I don't know if it's a, we talked about doing like a key to the, to the village, like, you know, give key to the city, you know?
Postmortem type thing.
And kind of like, the guy that picked up the trash, like do something like that?
Yeah, and I think maybe, maybe we throw this at PRG for some ideas.
Okay.
They're, they're pretty creative, they're pretty good at, at that kind of thing. I know we discussed several things about the gentleman that used to pick up the trash, that might be a, a good avenue to find some good ideas.
Okay. And yeah, if staff can like maybe throw it around, roll it around in your heads, and we can try to bring it back, let PR and G know.
We will. We can add to the work session.
Yeah, I would. Just so we can talk about it again.
We'll get some calls on the bench, too, so y'all are aware of that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up, we have discussion consideration of entering agreement with Urban Architects for revision of village hall plans and authorize administrator execute contract contingent upon attorney review.
So inside of your agenda packets, there is a memo that kind of highlights a brief summary of where we are in terms of village hall at the corner lot, and basically, in a nutshell, you guys had asked to go ahead and rebid the project at the last meeting, and in doing so, we have determined that the building permits with the county have expired, and therefore we need to bring the plans back up to the new building code that changed last year. So that being said, we do need to enter into a new agreement with Urban Architect, and I've given you two options inside of your agenda packet. The first option is to update the current plans that we have now with the new code. Looks like that is valued at $7,000 plus whatever the permitting would be, so I'd say less than $10,000. The other option is to redo plans altogether, if that's something that Cancel desires to do, but if so, it's going to cost somewhere around $40,000 to $50,000 for new plans. I would like to mention that we will have to get some site, civil site plan revisions made, too. I'm not exactly sure what that will entail. I'm still waiting on the civil engineer to get back in contact with me. If we decide to do option two on Urban Architect, the revision of plans altogether, it will be a lot more costly to, to do that route than it would to just update the new civil site plans.
Didn't you tell me that like the civil site plans were going to be like 40 to 52, or 50 to...
Yes, so I have a copy of the project traffic, tracking for what we've got currently with all the plans, and it looks like we have spent about $50,000, a little bit more with ESP for civil and stormwater for the plans that we have now. So if we, so if we do new plans, it's going to be about $50,000 roughly.
For just the civil plans? And then in addition to the new architect plans, it'll be another 50, so that's like another 100. So if we're trying to save a hundred thousand dollars in BNP, we're not saving it because we're spending the money in new plans and new civil site costs.
That's, that's correct. I would say you might save a little bit, but it, you, that's, that's a variable cost.
And then that, and then that also pushes our timeline out considerably.
Correct, yes.
So, location is not a factor?
It is, yes.
Because of the loose...
For the civil site plans, but not for the plan plan.
Not for the plan. We can put that same prop building here.
We could, yes. There, there are some, some sheets inside of the architectural plans that you have to have the civil site plans done, but we can, we can both, we can do the changes per the new building code, and then while we're waiting for the church to get back to us, and we can update that one detailed sheet in the architectural plans. That's not a big deal.
I mean, listen, as much as I went round and round and pitched a hissy fit about the way that the town hall looked, I actually started to like it. Especially when we made it not look so farmhousey with the colors, and we made it more streamlined and looked like an old farmhouse, the white with the, you know, the wood trim and... So if it were up to me, I would leave it with option number one, update the new code, get whatever little bit of civil plans that we need done, done, and then get it out to bid. And we can always, we can kind of do it like, like we talked about before, we're kind of doing everything simultaneously, so at least start, keep working on the corner, we're not, we have to update them anyway, so we're at least updating them, and then we can put it out for bid, because that's not, that's a minimal cost, and we can just kind of keep pushing the ball forward. That's...
Totally agree with Councilwoman Vandenberg, absolutely.
So, we don't, no, seems like it gets dragged out. We're waiting to hear from the group that volunteered to come in and talk to us about how things should be placed, not that we would follow their lead exactly to that. Do we want to...
No.
Okay. Do you want to hear from them? Before we do anything?
I don't, I don't, what they are going to tell me is not going to change my mind whether we put it here or we put it at the corner.
Okay.
It's going to, it's going to be the church.
I, I'm in agreement with, I just think we need to figure out where the location is, because why spend money here if we're going to lease, if we're not going to get that lease with the church? Why spend any money with that? And just, let's just focus on that.
But we're not.
We are.
We're not.
We're talking about just being building.
We, no, what I was saying was, we have to update the new code anyway.
Right.
So update it as we're doing it on the corner.
Okay.
So update the plans, we have to do it anyway. Update the civil stuff on the corner, because that's minimal.
Yeah, I'll make an, that is. So basically, I need to get with the civil engineer to determine what the cost is of the civil plans at the corner lot.
But that's totally separate from this.
That is totally separate from this. I will have to bring that back to Cancel at a, at a different date and time for execution, but I do want to, I do want to know, it is, it's going to cost something. So if, if we are in agreement to move forward with revising the, the code at the corner lot, then I can get a cost for the contract for revising the civil.
The bottom line, I think you would agree with this, if we're building a village hall, we have to do that. We have to get out the code anyway.
Yes, correct.
So that has to be done, so I think we could all agree that, that we move forward with that.
But what Christine wants to know is, do you just want to go ahead and update it with the plans that we have? Or option two is just scrap what we've got, start over, and spend another 40 to 50 on architect fees, and then another 60 to 70, or 50 to 60 on civil plans?
I, I don't know, there are three new council members here, but I don't know how much time you've spent looking into the plans, but I know there was a lot of review. I was very comfortable with what we, our final layout was.
Yeah, that's why I said, if it's up to me, I'll, I kind of like what we did.
Right. And, and it's challenging with the, you know, architecture, what we're going to look at, but I think in the end, we got to a point where everyone was, either former council as well was, was comfortable with that, so.
Yeah.
So I would say...
And Bob just said he agrees, so.
From my standpoint, if, if what you guys have, have come up with is, is good, looks good, it's a good option, everything fits perfectly, I don't see any reason to go back and spend money and start all over again. I say, for right now, keep things moving, we just give the, the architect plans up to, to code.
Yeah.
We have six months to proceed before our permit runs out again, from that point, so that's, I know this from building my own house, you have six months on your permit. So that gives us some more time to get, figure out where we're going to put this thing, and if we need to redo civil, if we need to do new civil plans, put it here, or if we're going to just update the ones on the corner. But I don't think we need to spend money on updating the civil plans on the corner until we have a really good idea from the church if we're going to move it over here, because that would be wasted money when we would just put it into the civil here.
I agree.
So, but getting, keeping the building alive is important, I think, at this point, because it's the cheapest route.
Okay.
So do y'all, with that, with that being said, do you want to have like a deadline from the church, or encourage like a...
I'd like to be reached out...
You know what, I would, I think we should put some type of markers. I mean, to move this along, we can't allow it just to kind of run without some structure to it. And I think it'd be appropriate to say, you know what, we need a date, and, and let's provide the dates, and let's provide the map. I mean, you, you build a plan and you work the plan.
We have six months on the, on a permit, so I would say we need to know something in three months from the church.
Oh, gosh, I would have a Louisiana...
Well, I mean, very, very outside.
I'd like to, I'd like to have a...
Like, no, more quicker, but...
I'd like to have an answer from the church by the end of August.
I'd say the end of September.
End of August.
I'm, I'm good with either one, to be honest with you, because, again, this is, this is something that we've been working on for...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, I agree.
We've allowed, we've allowed, and I, I'm just...
We got a six-month window here to work in before we have to renew the permit again, and it's, it's more money. So, you know, the quicker we can get an answer, the better.
Well, and, and if, if we've got, put it out to bid, that's going to take time, and then we've got to get the bids back, and we've got to open them, and then we've got to pick one, and then they've got to break ground. I, the earliest I can possibly see in any place that we break ground is January, and that's the earliest.
Once you, once you get your first inspection, then the, then the permits stay live for six months until the next inspection. So that process doesn't shut down on you once you get started and start getting permits. So we have six months to start something.
I just, I just like the end of August, and then we can talk about it in September meeting, but that's me. That's me being, you know, aggressive.
Well, I, I think to your point, I think to your point, we should set, with anything, with anything we do, we should set a goal. What is that goal? Our goal is to break ground January 1st. All right, then let's work back to that. What gets us there? Because if not, we're going to be talking about this, this time next year and going, well, we just need to do this, and now we got to do, redo this, and so I think if we just put some stakes in the ground, put some time in the ground, and hold every, we just want to do accountability.
Mm-hmm.
Tell the church, I mean, you gotta...
We need, we need a decision.
You wanted those drawings, and we got those drawings to you, does, are you comfortable with that? Does that, does that throw you off the track?
Yeah.
If it does, then, then what puts you back on? Or do you just want to continuously, you know, continue to stay off the track?
Yeah.
Then that's fine, then we move to down there. But once we put the things in the stand...
Yeah.
I, I'm agreeing with you. January 1st would be a great goal for us to set to say we're going to break ground.
I'm with you.
All right.
So you want to give them, the end of August, then, and... And?
Because we're not asking for a signed contract by the end of August. We just want to see if this picture looks okay and if they've got questions and how they feel about the building.
Give us your feedback on this. Give us your feedback.
That's all we're wanting.
You're talking about a month and a half, give us feedback.
Yeah, because that's going to determine if we're going to do the work that we need to do on the land.
Correct.
To determine that. And in, in the end, maybe more, maybe less, but I would imagine it'd be less.
Okay, so let's say end of August.
I agree.
And let's go option number one. And I'll make a motion for that.
Okay.
Um, and then we just kind of keep moving the ball forward. And when you do January 1st, and Christina, can you put together like a, a thingy of what we need to have done by then?
One other timeline in there. We're, we're not asking for a contract by August, but we need to have that contract in there before we can break ground.
Right, oh yeah.
I'll put a timeline together.
Yeah, we need a date for that too, that they, you know, to target.
Christina can say January 1st and then work back with everything that we need to have done from then, now to then.
Right.
Yeah.
Can, can you communicate that to them or do, would you want me to do that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I'll proceed with Urban on option one.
Do you want a motion for that?
I do, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to, um, enter into an agreement with Urban, Urban Architect for the revision of village hall plans, option number one, and authorize administrator to execute the contract contingent upon attorney review.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. Um, next up, we have discussion of National Night Out event, October 6th.
Okay, so, this is me, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, in our Park, Chalk and Greenway meeting, we found out that National Night had been postponed from beginning of August until the beginning of October. So the date is now Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. Park, Chalk and Greenway were talking about handing that over to the homeowners associations and just letting them kind of all do their own thing. I like it, I mean, this is my opinion, and I said, listen, that's a council decision. Let me take it back to council and figure out what we want to do. I like, I like having the village sponsor. I like having it at the park. I like having all of the law enforcement that comes out. I think it's great for the community. I think it's a great way for, um, you know, to show our support, but also to have that interaction, to learn, to meet our deputies. Like, I think it's, I think it's a great thing. And I think that if we turn it over to the HOA, it's like, I lived here 10 years and our HOA's never did it. Now, I don't know how long the village has been doing it, but our HOA's never done it.
I think we've been four years now.
So, so, okay, so our HOA's never done it and the village started doing it. And I, I mean, I just think we need to continue to support that event.
I agree, and it's not where we've been.
It's an outdoor event. And listen, if we're still in the middle of COVID and we can't have large gatherings, we cancel it. Chances are, it's going to be canceled anyway. But at least that, that's an event that we can be out and be supportive. It's not on a weekend.
So here's the challenge that I would say to PRG about going back to the villages or each, each neighborhood. Number one, it's very costly for those neighborhoods to do that. And yes, it's a chance for the neighborhood to get together. But we've been on that board as an HOA member, and I've done it for years. And it was pulling teeth to get anyone to show up, even a fire truck for that matter. The fact that we can get as many officers down there and all the different forces that Union County, you got the sheriff shows up there, you got, you know, sometimes, uh, um, uh, the, um, Board of County Commissioners will, will at times show up there. You got opportunities for, well, it's a great venue, number one, but opportunities for the, I think there was a company that had wildlife there, snakes and, and all that. So many different things, so many different activities. And I'm telling you, it is almost impossible. And that's probably why your HOA didn't do it. And it combined all the costs where we can go to them, each individual neighborhood. And we set that date. And again, if it cancels, it cancels, like everything else. I think we're pretty flexible people that we could get the heads up on that, that it would cancel and that would be fine. It's Tuesday night, it's October, and it gets the whole.
Be nicer, it won't be so hot.
Don't forget that there is that 10% of us that don't live in HOAs in the community too.
There you go, no, and then, I mean, yeah.
But even if you did, and you were a big HOA, we, we were pulling teeth. And I remember Anthony Berman stopping by as a councilman because he knew we were doing it. And, um, and, you know, we thanked him for that. But just getting the, having the whole council being able to be there, if you're available, great.
So, so our message is, we want the village to sponsor.
As far as I'm concerned, there's, there's no benefit in going back to the old ways.
Okay.
Created, it wasn't, it was hard to get people to come.
Okay, so Mason, have you ever done this before?
No, man.
Okay, so, so you and Tommy, Tommy, it's Tommy, I always want to say Timmy. You and Tommy will, will, Park, Chalk and Greenway will get, I think we're actually going to invite you to our next, um, board meeting so that we're going to need to meet everybody, but to kind of talk about this and kind of what our past deputies have done and kind of been out and helped us because they, Ed Swan really drove it for us.
He would be a good resource if you can, can have a conversation with him.
Yeah.
And I believe, um.
Steven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He actually worked with Ed, Ed transitioned last year, so he's got some experience in it as well.
So some of our partners, Steven, they got some ideas of what it's two.
Okay.
The, the Dallas, it's our first one.
Yeah, but at, at least there'll be two of you and that'll be, yeah. And, and we've got, and we've got a lot more time to plan it now. So I do think that we're going to, I think that they're going to ask you to come to that, to that meeting.
The other thing I'd ask you, Christina, if it's possible, is if, we have a contact list for all the HOAs?
We do.
Sending out a note to them, because most HOAs, they're organized, they have money to spend, they can easily donate a hundred dollars.
We need to entertain our new deputy of school.
And that helps you with whether it's buying materials and stuff. And it, it takes the burden off the village. It's a way to get them, because I, I, trust me, when we did it ourselves, it was 10 times the cost. We had to go find the food and stuff and get people to come out. Where now, it's, you know, every little neighborhood donates something that helps with the burgers, the hot dogs, all those different things, so.
Okay, so we're all in agreement?
We'll get that.
Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you, that's all I had.
All right, next up, we have a discussion of partnership, a note that's been tabled. Uh, next up, discussion consideration of street sign replacement plan, Christina.
So a few months back, we, um, brought up the spec manual that has the new street signs, which are depicted here. Yay, look how cute they are. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
So we have put together a plan, a three-year plan to basically implement all of our signage that we currently own today. We were trying to base some type of prioritization based on participation from HOAs. There is interest from HOAs to participate. They just didn't know exactly what the actual request was. And I didn't really know what we were going to recommend. So my recommendation at this point is to do phase one and ask for 50% of HOA contribution. Anyone that is participating.
Is this a three-year thing you said?
It is. We currently have, we currently have $15,000 budgeted for street signs, potholes and miscellaneous repair. We could go ahead and do all of them in one, one year. But, um, you know, the, the point would be to, to, to secure some type of HOA.
So these are roads we own right now currently, right?
Correct.
Well, we haven't.
We have not accepted Firethorn and Heritage Joke, so we don't own those yet, but we should be coming up.
Within a year.
To accept those, yes.
So here's what I would do. I'd go to Amber Meadows and I'd say, hey, your guys' cost is going to be 133.53. Would you like some nice new road signs?
So you want me to do 100%?
I'd just ask them, why not? Especially it's 133.53.
I can tell you, I can tell you that, that.
I guarantee Firethorn has an extra $667 and 65 cents to pay for street signs. Make them look pretty.
We could definitely do that.
Sorry, Jamie, what were you going to say?
When I'm looking, when I'm.
Welcome to my world.
Sorry.
When I look, when I, really, when I look at these costs, and here's, here's the other thing. Uh, when we look at the time of year right now, we present this to all of these HOAs and say, this is something that we're looking at doing. And you present the cost to them, that's a minute, that's a.
Okay, we can do that for sure.
And that would be something that we, we give back to the HOAs, saying, hey, listen, we negotiated this. We would like for y'all to be a part of this. Um, your cost would be Firethorn, $667. Bob, yours would be $44.
Christina, put us first on the list. John Jones to write the check.
We'll go back to the HOAs and we'll bring it back at the work session.
First on the list.
But I tell you, I think, I think whoever come up with that, I think that really, that's.
I love that, it's so cute. It's so cute.
We are keeping that logo, correct?
Yeah.
You know, and here's, here's another one of those tiny tidbits. Here's one of these other little tiny tidbits when you start looking at bringing in other neighborhoods and having them come in. Just something like that, that people can.
Look at our cute little road signs. You can have one too.
Well, you'll know, you'll know that you live in Marvin and not.
That's right.
Not in Marvin.
That's true.
Because you got a seal on your sign.
There you go.
We'll have some information at work sessions. We'll, we'll get back to you on, um.
Yeah, because most of the annual meetings are right around the Christmas time. Right, yeah. So if we hit them now, that could be something improved, right?
I mean, I, I mean, this is like, I mean, I would ask them for the full amount and then we can knock it out and be done with it. And, and if somebody balks at it, be like, okay, well, here's the total. How much can your HOA pay? And put it back on them and tell them, tell them to tell us what they want to pay.
But these are actual costs you got.
Yes.
The total cost was $10,000, okay? And that's from what we own now, it's just.
Minus Firethorn and Heritage Joke, yeah.
All right, we're got direction now, right?
Yep.
Okay, so next up, unfinished, uh, discussion and consideration of finished minutes.
So, so Barbie did not finish the minutes. We've got two options, to contract with her at $25 an hour to complete the minutes, or staff can do it. I vote staff does it. Sorry, staff. We already paid you guys.
Welcome to martyr. Well, I think it's a.
I think we, yeah. I don't, I don't, by no means do I want to add to, to anything, but.
It's not that many.
To, this was her day.
Yeah.
And let's, I, I think it would be, um, I think we did the respectful thing with this and let's, let's.
Yeah, and, and they're not that much. And if, if it's, if we get a little backed up, then we get a little backed up, but it's, it's not that many minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob, you're okay with that?
I'm great. I'm just, I'm immunity, yes, I'm great with that.
Do you, do you want a motion for that, or are you good?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, we have discussion consideration of Weddington Chase repairs for Rose.
Yes, I'm going to pass this around. This is a photo of a sinkhole in Weddington Chase. We seem to have some issues in Weddington Chase with sinkholes. We actually have another one that will be coming around at some point in time. Is it Weddington Chase too?
I mean, really, isn't this, isn't this a brand new road?
This is a repair that is desperately needed for, um, for fixing. It is a hazard, so we need to get this addressed pretty quickly. I have asked the engineer to look into the cost. He estimates that it's going to cost somewhere between $6 and $9,000. So we are still assessing what's happened and how it took place. And we can try to prevent this from happening again. Um, but it is a sinkhole that's associated with a catch basin issue. And we will hopefully have some more information about the cause and, um, what's happened a little bit more in detail. But for the time being, it's considered an emergency repair and needs to be repaired so that no one gets hurt.
Don't you wish we would have known all this stuff before we decided to take power bill funds and start taking over Rose? Did we talk about this, Joe? Yeah, all right, so we've got to do it. So I make a motion to authorize repair of Weddington Chase emergency road in an amount not to exceed $10,000 with a vendor to be determined and allow administrator to execute the agreement.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Grudgingly.
Uh, next up, we have, um, discussion consideration of coffee with council.
Okay, this is me. So we, um, so we had, um, a number of people come to our last coffee with council, which is great. But afterwards, Bob and I kind of chatted about it. And we, he really felt like having people just kind of walk in and catch the tail end of conversations is maybe detrimental to the whole process, because then you got to kind of go back and explain what you're talking about. And that may not be why they're in there and they might not want to listen to that. So we were thinking that maybe we do like 15-minute increments of appointments. And we'll ask people to set an appointment. Um, you know, they know if they're coming in or not. They're not just driving by and be like, oh yeah, it's coffee with council, let me just stop in. Um, so I think if we do like 15-minute increments and just let people know that this is your time slot. And if somebody wants to sign up for two, because they think they're going to be there for 30 minutes, and they can do that. Um, but I think that that's a good, I think that that would be, make it a little more streamlined and a little easier to, um, to have a productive conversation.
I think that's a great idea. I hadn't thought of that. I, we tied the deal of appointments and then it got to a point where no one would sign up. But, so, let me ask you this. If no one signs up with an appointment and we have, our schedule would be coffee with council, then.
I'd still show up because if somebody, somebody is like, oh yeah, it's coffee with council today, let me call really fast. It's 10:15, or let me see if I can get in there at 10:45. I'd still come, because I can sit here and do more.
But how would you control that? I mean, just say you got 15 minutes or, I mean, okay.
Yeah, you have, you have 15 minutes.
If three people do that and.
Then the first person that makes the appointment, they get the appointment.
Just want to make sure logistics are covered because.
I mean, I know that may be a little bit more work on you guys, but it's only two days.
And we asked for an appointment, it was, I, I always hit cleared Wednesday at 10 o'clock. And, and all we ask is that they would let us know within a day or two. So we're going to ask a 24-hour notice for.
Well, I think, I, I think if somebody is rolling, if they are like, oh my gosh, you know, it's, it's Thursday morning, it's 9:30. And they're like, oh, you know what, coffee with councils this morning, I really want to make it, let me call real quick and see if I can get an appointment. And, you know, they call and they're like, you know, there's, you've got a 10 to 15 slot.
You've still got to call, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Protocol would be, as a person, you can't just pop in here.
Yes.
And interrupt someone. You have to call and confirm that there's a slot open for you. We'll still be here as council members. I think it's a great idea, we'll, we'll still be available.
I mean, we'll try and see how it works.
I, I agree, because what happened the last time was, was an interruption. And fortunately, I wasn't here physically, but it was, it seemed to be interrupted. And I didn't even get the chance to thank Mr. Chen, I think his name was. Bob, you met with him. For, for his questions and stuff. And my understanding, he, Bob had walked him out and I was continuing the conversation with another constituent. So, um, I think it's a great idea, having appointments this way. We were, even though it said it in there, respect other people's time, this is a way to respect people's time in 15 minutes.
And I know, okay, yeah, so let's try that. I know, Andy, you need to reschedule your July one.
Just one second. The 22nd. Unfortunately, I.
That's okay.
Found out yesterday I'm out of town.
No, no, that's okay. Do we have a calendar, like handy, that you can give me real quick? I think probably what we'll do is when we publish the thing, we're just going to say coffee with council, because as stuff pops up and it changes, like, it may not be Andy that's here, it may be me instead. So instead of publishing who is going to be there, it's just there'll be two members of council come in and talk to us, and then that way, you know.
That's smart, allows flexibility for us.
Yes, and if the schedule has to change, then, you know, we can be a little bit more flexible. Oh, yeah, let me see that. Thank you. Oh, don't write on it? Can I have a sticky note?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Do you need the, do you need the actual schedule that y'all have, the coffee?
No, that's good. Okay, so, yeah, because I've got Bob and Joe down for this one.
Can you go in Barbie's office in the.
Where is the next one?
The 22nd.
And who is there?
Well, it's, right now, it's Bob and Joe, but I don't think that's right. I think it's Andy and somebody.
I show myself being.
So maybe Andy and Joe.
I filled in for Jamie, so I would assume where I was, Jamie would fill in. I forget what my date was, but.
So I'm still good for the 22nd, and anyone, you're not going to be able to make it. Can any of you make it that night?
Wait, that's a Wednesday. We don't do it on Wednesdays. We do them on Tuesday mornings and Thursday nights.
I can do Tuesday.
Don't we? Don't we just do them on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
This one I got also says July 22nd, Wednesday.
I don't know why we did it on Wednesday, but we did it.
I don't know why we did that either.
I'll take, I'm going that Thursday as well. I'm done.
Okay, no, 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 that's fine. Yeah, but we don't do them on Tuesday. Oh, yeah, we do do them on Tuesday nights. That's why we did that. Okay, so, okay, so Andy, you're not going to be here, so I'll, I mean, wait, Joe, are you down for that night?
I'm down for the Wednesday 22nd.
Okay.
In the evening.
Okay, so you keep that one. Jamie, you've got that one.
So I got the 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
So we're staying on Wednesday, right?
Hmm?
We're keeping it.
Yeah, we're going to keep it on Wednesday. And then Jamie and Bob are on the 6th, and Joe and I are on the 25th.
So let me ask you this.
And that's in the morning at 10:00.
Christina?
Yes, sir.
Who's going to be here to, are you going to stay here?
The 22nd is Wednesday, 6 to 7.
That's right, yeah. We'll make sure our staff member's here, for sure.
6 o'clock, and then.
And then you're the 6th.
6:00 P.M.
Yep.
Coffee with council.
Yes. And then you're August 6th.
Okay.
With Bob at 10:00.
Is that the schedule?
Yeah.
You got it.
Okay. And then, next work session, we need to extend the calendar out for the rest of the year.
Can I just, I want to make just a, just an initial thought. I'm agreeing with the names, because sometimes they come up and we don't put the names. I'm disappointed that we can't, that we truly can't have, we're changing what we started out with because of one bad meeting. And I agree, we should always be flexible to change. We had one bad meeting, and someone who did come in and was disrespectful. It's a shame, because my thought is that we would put a sign out there that says Coffee with Council tomorrow from 9:00 to 10:00, and they could just, you know, they're coming in and going, oh, today's Coffee with Council. Let me swing in and let me just talk with them. Where if there were two people here, I take one, and Andy take one, and we answer the question. I'm disappointed that the spirit of what we did this for, it only took two meetings to get to the point where we have to make change to it.
We don't have to.
No.
It was just a suggestion.
I know, it's a suggestion, and we can go back and we can change it. I'm disappointed that we had to make a change on the second meeting. Because of, just with anything, you have one bad apple, you have one bad experience, and we rushed to change. And again, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just making a point, it would be nice that we lived in a place and time that we could put a sign out there that says Coffee with Council today from 9:00 to 10:00, and people could come in, whether you disagree with me or not. Ask the question in a respectful manner, respect the other people that are there. And can you do it like that?
Well, then, I mean, again, this was a suggestion. I'm fine leaving it, but I do want people to know, and maybe we need to put this out, that if you're going to come in and you're going to have a comment, you're going to be constructive, and you're going to be courteous. Otherwise, you can leave or I will leave.
Again, I think you're putting another hurdle into our transparency piece. So I've got to call in, I've got to call in, and I've got to make, oh, that time is different. I'm on my way to work. I can't do Coffee with Council. So we're adding another hurdle into something that should not be, really, it can't be.
Then, I mean, I'm fine leaving it.
Leave it for now.
Leave the names off.
Yeah, but just, yeah, right.
I agree with that.
Leave no appointments for now and see how it goes. And if we have continued problems, then maybe we look at changing it.
Can it be just noted that Coffee with Council today is an open, transparent meeting, and that when messages go out about it, that please be respectful of anyone else that's here when you walk in.
I'm pretty sure we had that, but, but just, you know, highlight it.
Question for you. Would that Coffee with Council be considered a public meeting?
No, because you don't have a forum to be gathered. So there's a statute that states in a public meeting, if someone disrupts and you ask them to leave, if it's a public meeting, they disrupt. If you ask them to calm down, they don't, they continue where you can. But public meeting, they're guilty of a, or they can be guilty of a misdemeanor, but you can have them escorted out.
See, but I can get up and leave too. If you're going to be rude.
Yep.
I can get up and walk out too, and so can my fellow council member.
Yeah, we're all free to come and go.
The reason I ask, because it's like, should we be recording it, that kind of stuff, you know what I mean? It's, and I certainly don't want to get, make a constituent uncomfortable by recording a conversation. Because the guy who did show up, he had some legitimate questions. There were two that had some legitimate questions and concerns, and then, my understanding is, the third person who showed up had a recording device, and, you know.
Public place, they could.
Not like I was trying to get those.
But again, because, here's the thing, this is the beauty of it. I don't care if they have a recording device. You know what, it's just, you know. I just was curious about if it's considered a public meeting.
Should we take it? Without being hijacked, with somebody being rude and interrupting. And I think that 99.9% of this community is respectful and will continue to be. And if there is, if there's a problem and we identify it, then we make a change at that point. Or we make specific changes or something, but at this point, I think.
I'm fine with that. It was just a suggestion.
And I think it's something we have to consider as it moves forward. If it happens again, I think you've put the line in the sand that this is how it will be treated. It's just that.
No, I agree with you. It does hinder people from just, I agree.
It infringes on the constituents being able to come in and not have the time to do it. Again, I think a sign out there.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Can we get a sign?
If we put a sign out.
Coffee with council, cocktails with council.
I mean, because they're.
That's the 6 o'clock.
Yeah, that's the 6 o'clock one. Mimosas and muffins.
It's not a public meeting. Let's have a beer.
Mimosas and muffins.
But I think having that out there, because we keep talking about transparency.
I agree.
Let's put it out there. Coffee with council, come in. I want to have 10 people go, you know what? Andy just asked a great question. His question was, and then you repeat it, and you answer it to all of them, and then you go through it. You need more time, we get more time. That way, you're not just putting markers down, but I totally agree with you that if it happens again, this is what we might have to fall back to.
Okay, I mean, I'm good with that. It was merely a suggestion to try to curb some.
And honestly, an appropriate suggestion based on the circumstances, but.
And by the way, just to say that the concept was a fact of the success of it. The fact that we had three people, and I want to emphasize that to the public. It was busy, believe it or not. I mean, it was people standing, you know, at the door. So it's actually been a very positive thing. It was more or less, you know, kind of, okay, how do we kind of control it a little bit so everybody gets their moment, you know, to talk? And if there's three people, and the first person had some legitimate questions that needed to be kind of dealt into and answered, it was like, okay, then the second person came, and then the third person came, and I think we got done. It was like about, not that that's a thing, but it was, we got done. It was about an hour and a half, you know, a half an hour overall we're supposed to. And it was like, okay, as this becomes more popular, how do we kind of control it, you know? So that was kind of the birth of it. That's where that came out from, was the popularity.
Well, also, the question started going a little bit off track of what this meeting was intended for, almost like a, you know, so that's where it got to a point where. I mean, I think your suggestion, I'd love to see that sign.
Yeah, get a good sign, maybe. Coffee with council, cocktails with council.
Residents only, maybe? So we don't, otherwise, you can't get everyone stopping by for coffee.
Yeah.
That's okay. Maybe they got some good suggestions about something.
All right. We good where we're at?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, agenda items. Review of action items, ongoing action items list.
You want me to start with the actual action item list?
Yes.
Yeah. So Christina will contact NC DOT about lane closure, I'm sorry, Rohit will. NC DOT about the lane closure with a tree removal. Rohit will also get a secure date for the public input meeting at the next planning board to present to council at the July work session. We will also post the Board of Adjustment vacancies. We will respond back to Jennifer Hiri requests, if we haven't done so already. Christina will coordinate with the out-of-jurisdiction calls for the law enforcement response and present that at the 7:30 meeting. We will also notify PRG of the need to secure some ideas for recognition for our recently passed away former late mayors. We will present the schedule for the rest of the year for the Coffee with Council at the next work session. Council member Liam will follow up with the church in terms of the date of August 30th for an answer. I will send a note to the HOAs about the sign request and their cost. Let's see. Get a sign for Coffee with Council, residents only. Update the village hall timeline. Execute agreement with Urban Architect for the option one, and then wait until August for the civil site plans. And then note a comment in the communication plans for being respectful of anyone in attendance at the Coffee with Council. I think that's all. Did I forget anything?
And just a note, when you guys were discussing those dates, John Jones, I know you're still on, it looks like. I plugged it in, and she got an invite, so the system, I guess, with Apple or whatever, so I've also plugged in both dates, so you may get the hearing from planning board members saying, I've already got those two dates that we talked about. Somehow, that you probably got the second date as well, so.
Probably.
So that's not official. It was just came from me that, because I plugged it in for myself, it showed as.
Sure did.
Appointment for everyone, that it may not be fact, just so you know, Rohit.
Okay, thanks.
And John.
What'd you have, Andy?
Do we need to post an opening for the planning board?
Oh, oh, yes. We, no, but we had an applicant that I spoke with and really liked, that I would.
And I did too. I spoke with this, there was an applicant that was there, and we chose, I think, the.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for the last.
Yes.
So there were two applicants for one position. Now that there's a position open.
So I'd like to reach out to him and see if he's still interested, and I'll get up with you on that.
So we would still need to do an approval on that. Can we do that at a work session? If you reach out and he's still interested?
Yeah.
We can do that at a work session? That work session is going to be after the next planning board, correct?
It is, but it's fine if there's one short.
Okay, yeah, but I'm saying, if you reach out, then he may just want to attend it, because it's a public meeting just to get up to speed.
Okay. All right, I'll take care, oh, that's on me. Oh, I have homework.
Okay. Anything else? We're not going through this?
Um, no, we are, but, okay, yeah, 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 no, we're good. Oh, can we just change Barbie to clerk on this?
We can, yes.
Do we know where she was on the cellular plans with Windstream?
We do not. I'll find out.
Okay. Can you put that on the work session?
Can.
Cellular plans, cellular. Christina, you can take off the corner property on Marvin School Road.
Mm-hmm.
You can, yep, take that off. Has Derek done the rental signage yet?
He has. He's done. I'll take it off.
Let's take that off. Board of Adjustments, I would just say that we've got openings, kind of change that up. Hey, Rohit, where are we with our roundabout lights?
They haven't made any progress, and we have no leverage to make them make progress faster.
Okay. Hey, listen, I'm going to ask every time to let people know that we're still working on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm good. I will.
All right.
You're just going to keep saying the same thing. You're not even calling them, are you?
I'll never yell at them, yeah. Get a little angry and angry every time.
Blame it on me, be like, hey. Be like, Kim says that she really wants her roundabout lights. You can blame it on me.
Before we begin the council's closed session, council comments. Bob, you want to go first?
Sure. First off, I was kind of a little disheartened that we take the discussion of the partnership. Gene Stowe's documentary, Inherit the Land, and reason is, is because I feel like that we could help with a degree of partnership, that I think that I look period correct where I could be the pastor of the church, of the Banks Church. So I'm excited about this whole, I'm excited about the whole story. So if there's anything I would like, I think I could period fit right there. Just get me the costume, I'm there. And my partnership. But honestly, I think that, again, I want to thank the good work of everybody there at the office, you know, in these times. And of course, you know, once again, referring to COVID-19, I hope that the outbreak that happened at, you know, Marvin Ridge, I hope that that's kind of tempered, you know? You know, when you're hearing it on the national news, that's one thing, and then when you hear it and see it in your own backyard, it's kind of like this thing is ramping up rather than going away. So I appreciate everybody being safe, and once again, you know, I think the great work we're doing. I'm very excited about, you know, going further with Village Hall. And I think, I personally, of what I've seen of the plans of the hall, it looks wonderful. So whatever tweaks we need to make, I think it's going to just be a welcome, you know, addition to the community. I think it's going to be a centerpiece, but that's what I've got. I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work and that we're all doing, you know, for the citizens of Marvin.
Thank you, Bob. Jamie? Just one last, again, thanks to Barbie for all she's done to help me personally, to get me going and bringing me up to speed, and all she's done for Marvin for the amount of years that she's been here. And just a huge hug and thanks for all that she has done. She will be missed. Thanks, staff, for all that you do. I mean, we always get a lot of stuff, but this stuff just doesn't just fall out of the sky. A lot of work is done when we're not here between meetings and doing this, and it's a testament to you, to the entire staff, for all your hard work. There's a lot of hard work that goes into this. And I can tell you that there's a lot of people that, the constituents out there have no idea how much work that you put into, and the time and the energy and the effort that you put into hold us accountable and keep us going, and stuff like that. The three words that really kind of come to my mind for this council and for our boards and staff that just resonate with me, and I stick to it, from Coffee with Council to the boards, to moving plans forward for Village Hall to downtown the village district and everything, transparency, accountability, and integrity. And those words just, you know, stick out with me, and I appreciate council, all your work and working together. And whether we agree or disagree, we are moving the ball forward, and I use those three words to keep us going. Thank you.
Andrew?
Or Henry?
Andrew?
You again?
No, my mother calls me Andrew.
You're in trouble.
I call her just to say, what, what again?
I don't have a whole lot. You know, it's going to take me a couple of meetings to get to where I speak more, but I would like to thank staff for all of their hard work. And, you know, I've been, they've been helping me get acclimated, and it's, you know, it's a little bit of a challenge to come in new, and so I really appreciate the extra help from staff and all that you guys do, because I know you guys are busy as you can be, and you put in so much. So thank you very much for that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, staff, as always. Appreciate all of your hard work and putting up with me, for sure. Want to send out my condolences to Nick's family. He will be sorely missed. And I enjoyed working with him for the couple of years that I was able to work with him. So my condolences out to his family. Yeah, I mean, these were crazy times, and I hope everybody's being safe. You know, just kind of, we're plugging away here, and, you know, we really hope that, you know, the citizens of Marvin realize how hard we're working and how much we're really trying to move the ball forward. And Jamie, I liked your three words. I think that was really good, and I think we're doing a good job holding ourselves to those three words as we're moving forward on these projects. And it's, I'm looking forward to continuing to. And it's, I'm looking forward to continuing to push the ball forward, so thanks to all of council as well.
Thank you, Kim.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, again, sort of kind of tag on what Kim said about condolences to Nick's family. You know, he's a gentleman that will be sorely, sorely missed in this community. I can tell you that, you know, he offered to be consulted all along, even before when he swore me in initially, and then we brought him back into it, so we had a lot of history, so it was always good to hear his perspective on it. He was a man, I think, of few words, but I think his words, some of his words mattered. And he will be, he will be missed, he was, again, well-respected. I was glad I had the opportunity to meet with his family and learn a little bit more about him, because in the end, we all have our families, that's the most important part of our, our lives, and then we have this life, and, and I share with him, you know, there was a lot of talk when he was going through his, some of his issues that were, and I said, if he wanted to step down, and I applaud him for sticking it out and getting, get, going through this, because I think he truly enjoyed it, and my understanding, he was in politics up in New York as well. So, but we will, we will sorely miss him. Took an opportunity, drove my wife and I, after, she went for a run and I rode a bike ride, I decided I wanted to go check on Marvin Gardens. If you haven't been by there, I suggest you drive by, someone told me it was going to be ready by August. That's a tall ask, if that's the case, because there's a lot of trucks and moving around, but you know what? It's coming together and it's, it's, it's looking good, so. Third thing is schools, you know, governor's put through basically Plan B, I think that's probably the most prudent thing is this...
You haven't seen it.
I know, but it is, there's going to be options and stuff.
Oh, it's so bad.
But I would ask the constituents to really reach out to the community, I mean, to the schools, because...
Not us, don't call us.
No, the constituents, is what I'm saying, is to reach out, because in the past, we as parents got involved with our middle, elementary school. Once they hit middle school, you're, you're, you don't really have that parent, but I think they're going to be looking for help. And there's so many logistic things that we haven't thought about, which may involve the village. We may have to revisit our ordinances, especially with, if they're only going to allow 25 people on the bus. That means the traffic and the buses, and we just make, I think, a couple of years ago, we put an ordinance where they could not drop off their kids on the backside. Well, that may be the way to go to make this, because they're going to be encouraging kids to ride their bikes, kids have walked them off, and I can tell you, as a parent, but there was, was very challenging. I did have one little, there was a speed sign, I was supposed to take a picture, but it turns out that that thing is no longer in Seabrook. And it was just a cool little sign that said, as you came into Seabrook, it said, "Drive gently." And I just thought that was a neat way to kind of remind people to stay slowly. So, I did do my homework, but the sign wasn't there anymore, so I must have hit it, so. As far as Jean Snow, Bob, you mentioned, I wish it was still on too. Rohit, if I could ask you, before we get to that, I would be curious to find out if there's any way, if it's part of a 501(c)(3) that they could, if, if you could ask that, because that would be something I think I would be interested personally into doing some sort of thing, because I think, there, there's an amazing message there. As I'm reading the book and stuff and what, what's going on, it's a, it's a great story that I think can put Marvin on the map that just basically goes against what everyone else thinks and what's happening in this country and stuff. Again, the last thing back to the school, keep in mind, teachers, one-third of them are over 60 years old, and if they have incidents of more than five people, you're going to see these schools shut down, so we, we do need to be flexible. Thank Barbie again for all of her work and all of her efforts. Appreciate all the work she did for me over the years and stuff, and I wanted to thank her. And finally, thanking staff, you guys always were able to put together a meeting that, if it wasn't for me, wouldn't go as long, so... I'm getting signs from Kim, you know, time limits on council comments, so, but thank you all for attending, and then with that, I'm going to ask a motion to move into closed session.
I make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318.118356 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to prevent the attorney, to, to prevent? Are we preventing?
No, you should protect.
To protect the attorney-client privilege, to discuss terms of potential acquisition of real property for parcel 06-231-001AO Henry Nesbit Road, and to discuss personnel.
So, moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
On some axes, we're now moving into closed session.